What if I do another month out before we get here?
Yeah.
We'll get it in the absolute hottest part of summer.
Yes, and we're gonna have to have water.
Yeah.
I like to drive a water truck out there, took three times a day and squirted.
I would have some bad water.
That's a town, it's got that sad look on it.
Yeah. Awesome, thanks.
So cool you can take that thing, bring it up to that one, that one on the side.
Yeah.
It's setting candy.
All right, I call this meeting at Young County Commissioners Court Order. Let the record show it is nine thirty a.m. All five members of the court are present. We're streaming live on our YouTube channel. And if you're watching and you'd like to call and make a comment, please feel free to call in on nine four zero two two one two one oh seven. If you're able, please stand for the invitation to pledge your allegiance. You have the honor.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today, we ask you for guidance and wisdom through these proceedings, dear Lord. We ask you to be with our fellow Texans that have lost so much in these last few weeks, dear Lord. And we ask you to watch over us as the heat comes and the land dries, dear Lord. We ask your protection from wildfires and just anything that can go wrong in this community. We just ask for your hand of protection. And dear Lord, we just thank you each and every day for this opportunity to come to you and pray. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, and let the allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thanks, Stacy. We'll move to item number three, public comments. Are there any public comments today? Please.
I know y'all be tired.
No, it's good.
Uh, just wanted to ask if you could give us an update on your executive, what you could, about the executive meeting with Snowden. And is he approaching the tightest people with anything in particular? Especially asking questions about the environmental study and the archeological studies that would be necessary before all of this gets started? And also, did the discussion center around the new big beautiful bill, where a lot of this, uh, I guess subsidy, the federal subsidy that's, uh, has to be gone, or where a project has to be starting within a certain period of time where they don't get a subsidy? Did that affect the project? Just as much update as you can give something.
Sure, um, so we did not discuss the big beautiful bill and what's all in that. So we did not talk about that at all. But we did kind of talk about what we were, what we thought we could, we kind of discussed the pros and cons for different things to ask for, um, including donations to the volunteer fire department, road protection, both for county and for Texas dot. We talked about, um, kind of the pros and cons of different things to ask for in the, in the bill. Uh, one thing also that happened this week is we found out that there's two new house bills that relate to, um, battery storage facilities that have gone into effect. Um, House Bill thirty-eight twenty-four, which still is to fire safety standards and emergency operating plans for battery storage facilities. And House Bill thirty-eight oh-nine relating to the removal of the battery storage facility. So we provided them both, both to, to the developers. Not sure if they knew about them or not, but...
Those were state?
Those were state. State of Texas enacted them in this, in this last legislative session. So we sent that to them and told them that this would be, uh, it is state law, but it would be part of our, you know, if we came to a deal, we'd put it in, in our agreement too, but, um, so we just, we really just bounced off ideas of pros and cons and, you know, really what, you know, what type of incentive could be offered that would still keep the county whole? Um, primarily like if we can capture, um, sales tax revenues, revenues here versus then capturing it at the port of Houston when it comes in and stuff like that. So that was really the discussion. Do you have anything to add to that?
About the, how much of a, we kind of talked about how much they gotta break on certain things and discuss that. Know that would really change, like in what way?
Is there a, is there a schedule for him to meet with those guys?
He's be, he, after, he met with them last week and, um, I, the only, I, and I talked to him again on Saturday. And he said that, you know, he, he had a conversation with, with kind of a big picture kind of thought process from our side. And they hadn't had a chance to, to sit around and kind of digest it and, and come back with anything. So it's just, um, the, we have gotten z, no feedback back from them as far as his discussions with them.
So have you learned anything on the environmental study? If they've even started it?
I have not. You know, that one time, but I, I did leave where they had, um, they did a checklist of kind of where they were on things. That's the last, that's the last update I've had from them on that.
And then on, in y'all's discussion on your, on the tax abatement, you know, y'all are probably speaking to pilot program. Uh, are you doing it on an asset basis or on a megawatt basis as far as how do we calculate that?
Um, it's, it's, it's on a megawatt basis and, and that's really kind of how they're taxed. They're taxed based off their, you know, we all think about it, and I, and I think about it as an asset value. But the way they're actually taxed is on a energy producing capability, you know, like solar, so a, so a megawatt basis. And so it's hard for me kind of to digest that because for me it's, it's, they kind of can, you can kind of equate them together. And they, they're, in theory, they're close to the same thing, but, but yeah, they're, they're, they're taxed on the megawatts.
Okay, and do we have, I know Mr. Snowden pointed out that this project actually might be higher than what they originally? Any more about that?
Um, no, it's just he, he thinks it's, he thinks it's a bigger, bigger, well, the megawatts are the same, but the values that Tabador, Eris was assigning to the megawatt, he says the market's demonstrating it's actually a higher value. So the project's not necessarily a bigger project. It's, you know, it's just like most people and, you know, they're, they're trying to, they're talking their book by trying to discuss the values being a lower value. And he's discovering that the values are actually higher from looking around at other projects across the state.
So has it been able, have you been able to kind of distill that down to what a megawatt might be worth on the, on the tax basis when you worked out the pilot program?
He gave some, me some numbers. I honestly, I don't remember. Off the top of my head, I don't remember what they were as far as what, but, you know, he, he then equated it to a total project value, like an asset value. Another thing interesting is like, uh, he was, he, he said that the, the cost of solar equipment is, is declining. It's kind of as they're making more of it and more companies are making it. And so, you know, that, that cost today is at this price, but as, as time goes, it's, it's getting cheaper to, to build those. So I thought that was an interesting perspective on it that I didn't know before.
Okay, so at, so at this point, you're just basically waiting your back from now?
Yeah, I mean, this is a very, very early preliminary. And this is the, this, this was the first time that our consultant had actually reached out to us, this, this last week.
So, two hundred and forty-four million dollar value, it could, 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 you, 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 you need to talk about, not be a high, sort of, value, the, the, central area, what it is for the value goes.
There's...
We're in related megawatt value.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's, they, they came, I want to say, was it two sixty-four is what they came? Two sixty-four, and he thinks it's like three forty, three fifty. Yeah, that's the, that's the value they came, they came at, so...
All right, I've got a question if you don't mind. Is somebody not standing? Where are you looking at your question? I have to have somebody to put you on. It's okay. Are, are we on, are we on the track with the law, with the law amount that they would appreciate schedule? Does that, if that, if that work of value, or whatever, whatever you look at, does that work of value, would that, would that be correct?
Yes, except then there's also on top. Forty-nine?
Yeah.
Was that, I don't know what that number means. What, what is forty-nine, what is forty-nine percent?
Forty-nine percent, what, what taxable value would you, would you tell they? That's, that's what the law for, for tax amount that they pay in relation with project work.
So you're saying that number there?
It's number.
Forty-nine percent, right.
Forty percent, but it's not appreciation.
That's the, that's, that's, that's in theory the full amount of depreciation. I mean, that's the, that's the full value, so that, that number should be a hundred percent.
No, some kids over here, like what you pay, that's what I'm paying.
Uh, uh, for you pay for what?
The asset.
So if you bought a ranch for twenty-six million, that's the tax you would pay on your ranch?
I'm trying to confuse you here. If you have a house, it's on the tax roll, I mean, thirty-two thousand dollars.
Why are you comparing a solar farm to a house?
I'm just comparing tax that you pay.
But why would you compare, they're, they're apples and oranges. Why would you compare that to?
Taxes, tax.
Okay, but why don't we compare it to a ranch?
Be- because it's, that, 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 they, they, the taxes, ranches get that, they get, they, it's like you all, they, 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 they use the laws. Those things are, those are, those are ruled by law.
Okay.
This is the rule of the law that they get already.
Correct, but you're...
It gets him down to plan, had, had the tax, this appreciation scheme, they'd pay it full value.
Okay, if you want to compare it to a house, that's fine. I, I, I think it's apples and oranges.
You're playing devil's advocate. You're, you're fair. You know what I'm saying? Forty-nine percent, you pay this appreciation, you, you, this, this asset, you, you, forty-nine percent, they pay it by law. You couldn't, you couldn't charge them. You get fifty percent of the house, first round of the box. Then if you go to the place, you say the fifty percent, it gets you down to like twenty-five percent, but what? Asset value can be, that's full value.
Okay.
Now, then if you take a pilot payment of less than that, it's even more. You understand the reason how the pilot pays? That's discretionary money. You don't, you don't need to tax, you don't have to activate any spending.
Well, I mean, it, it's still revenue in the budget, so it, it, it works exactly like tax revenue.
Discretionary, you have to, you have to tax it.
Oh, you do.
Discretionary.
You do, because, because it changes what you can tax for, so it, 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 it is. I mean, it, it's not discretionary. It's no more, it's, it's exactly...
That's a way to claim me, that's like, this, 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 a lot of money you have.
Okay.
It's a, it's a discretionary money.
Okay.
So that's not part of your...
Okay, I disagree with that, that, that statement, but that's, that's fine, if that's, if that's how you want to present it.
Uh, no, that's what, I'm quoting, I'm quoting somebody.
Okay.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's discretionary money. That's the reason you...
We really love it.
I'm not going to say that, but, but I don't should, I don't owe you, it deals you out of, that's what they told me. Okay, that's right. It's like, it's like you, you're a little taking session. That's my taking session.
Okay, that's right.
But you know what we're talking about?
Okay.
Uh, so I'm asking, is anything wrong with that?
Well, I mean, I mean, if you're, if you're comfortable comparing it to a house and not comparing it to another solar farm or...
Forget the house. You have to know where the hundred came from. I said it's a taxpayer.
Okay.
You had a house for a two, three, four, thousand, million dollars.
If you're comparing it to a house, yes, your number's correct.
Okay, that's every taxpayer company, you just, I mean, I said, whatever taxable value of the tax roll, being a, 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 a land producing winner, which is zero, those things, it's, 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 you know what I'm asking?
Well, I mean, well, okay.
The only way you do that, you, you, that's like big, like, big things, big houses, two million dollars, you go there and, and have it get taxed off.
Or if you had a big pow, a big, uh, uh, a big, uh, facility, a manufacturing facility or, um, you know, if you had, I mean, there's, I don't know, but, but a, but a house, I mean, I just don't think you can compare a solar farm and a house.
Uh, this can get you a farm.
You built a two-hundred-and-sixty-four million dollar barn?
And that's what, 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 what the tax rate, what the tax value, one of the tax base. You just number up here, fifteen million dollars.
Okay.
By law, guys, the green stuff, you already get a fifty percent discount for the value. And that's the work, and that's, that's the law, and the real question is, why give them additional discount? That's the, that's the question. Pretty nice.
Well, one, you're competing with other areas trying to attract the project to your, to your region. And eighty percent of something is better than a hundred percent of zero. And if a project is built, this would add roughly fifteen to twenty percent to our taxable base, which would then have more money in the budget that would allow us to, would allow us to offset expenses. And so in a, in an environment where you've got expenses that are going up, 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 within inflationary environment, more revenue into the county allows us to either, to either, to either keep our tax rate, you know, or, al, allows us to offset that money against money that we would need to tax, so...
It's all the reason why you make a good deal, in, in your negotiation. Don't you give them that twenty-five, fifty, 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 five, you pay?
Oh, I agree, a hundred percent.
That's what you're going to shoot, you're gonna take.
Yeah, that's why...
You are, you are absolutely correct.
That's why we've hired a consultant.
You gotta do the best deal you can do.
Get the very best deal we can.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
We can't even get the very best deal we can.
You sound like we're in bed for six years, I think we're all reading the same thing, huh? Because, well, just because, just because, we're, 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 we're answering our, we're giving...
Well, our goal is to get the very best deal we possibly can for our taxpayers.
I know one county originally did that, but, but, so, you want to ask me, check, check?
How much?
Sixty.
They asked for sixty percent?
And, and the court felt, no, they'll give you twenty. They would accept.
Who, who went and accepted, the court or the solar farm?
Solar farm. Yeah.
That's our option.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
There's nothing wrong with them, with them not accepting the deal. I mean, that's, that's nothing wrong with that.
I know that. You heard the wrong call, but I checked the deal.
I, I agree with that.
Absolutely.
They haven't, they haven't, they haven't presented a house.
If you turn them down, were they paying forty-five and two tax rate on, on taxable value, whatever it is, versus the taxpayer of the county, a hundred percent of value, it's unfair. I don't think, I don't think you completely understood that in pilot time, this trap. They're gonna check, they're gonna check, even though they're paying us more, of less than what we're giving, we're giving potentially.
If you give them...
Well, it's not necessarily, if you give them, I'm, 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 I'm...
He's talking about the initial fifty percent or forty-nine percent that they initially get.
You take control, are you saying?
We, we totally understand that. Mr. Donald's point is, they're starting out right out of the gate. Within a ten-year time period, they're getting forty-nine point, whatever that is, tax rate. So when you add on top of that, that takes them well below that.
They know this, they're...
Oh, I know that. So I want to go back to Mr. Graham's comment.
Yeah.
That this would be potentially fifteen to twenty percent of the tax base. What is the tax base?
One point four billion. That is a hundred percent of, 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 of the, of the value right now.
Why would you want to put this on the time tax base?
Oh, we did, you did?
Absolutely, you did.
I'll tell you why. Because of Richard Abbott, who does the taxes for us, says, you do not want to put that much on you at one time, because it drives it down. And when you drive your rate down, at three point five percent, is all we can go up, go back up.
Yes.
We'd never gain back. And then we'd have, we would be sinking.
We wouldn't have the tax pay, if you had to then?
You wouldn't have your services.
You wouldn't have the services.
What services?
You may, you may, you may. Everything that we do would be, would be less.
In general.
All, all of the services that the county provides.
You got, the money, the money, you're saying, guys?
You may not have enough money for your jail.
It wouldn't be a hundred percent because you're already out of basis. It would be any increase. You're already paying.
Are you saying the guy that does the figures of tax and does this and, and with all these other companies don't always talk about it?
No, sir, I think we're comparing apples and oranges.
This ain't apples and oranges. This is, this is, this is basic.
They should know what they're helping us to do. Either in, in order, wouldn't say it's not, that's true, that's right.
You guys are worried about what's going on right here?
No, we're not. We're worried about...
What you, what y'all need to start worrying about what's going on in Austin, Texas?
That's right.
Because I'm gonna tell you, every time they go into session, a little bit of y'all's freedom gets chipped away. And I promise you, what we're trying to do is do things that will help in that area right there. There is, there is legislation in this special session right now that's gonna eliminate more than one thing. One thing I want to try to eliminate is how much we can spend. Do you want Austin to tell us what we can and can't spend? Because that's gonna affect what we can and can't do for y'all.
Well, we have talked, we're just saying this to you, dust the birds, keep the taffs, get them out of the economy.
Go ahead.
So we're, we're, we're asking the same questions down there we're asking you guys.
Okay.
But, so we're headed on that one, so what else?
The other thing is, is to cut our walls down there, suppress it. And that's not just the county, that's the city, and that's the schools.
So, we, we understand that, they're already cutting schools out and something like that.
That's the situation.
What's that?
We, we understand that, we're already trying to cut the schools out on being able to do this. And yes, we understand they're trying to cut the county out on trying to do this as well.
Well, that, that didn't affect this time, but I'm talking about, I'm talking about the board.
But it has been circulated to do that. So we, as Mr. Donald stated, we are, we do have our ears down there as well.
Got you.
But this is here local to us and it's very near and dear to us.
Yes.
Uh, especially Mr. Johnson, he's might have to live by it.
Well, not only us, but if, if you're listening to the public out there with the appraisals that's going up, you know, five to six to ten percent across the board, I haven't talked to anybody that hasn't had their property values go up.
Yep.
And the city of Graham is going up on the water, they're going up on the sewer. It's not just the countryside, it's the city.
Okay.
And everybody is complaining because they're getting taxed too much.
Okay, but...
And, now listen to me, and the, the, the whole deal is that a company comes in here and is gonna, you know, clear cut twenty-two hundred acres and produce one job. One job, and you're giving them a tax discount. The regular, the regular public does not get a tax discount. It's going up every day along with their other services.
We need investment in the county more than we need jobs. We have a lot of jobs.
We have a lot of jobs.
We have buses that bring workers into town.
Yes.
Every day because we don't have enough workers here in Young County.
What kind of jobs are we...
Tower extrusion.
Right here.
And, uh... Texas rec.
They're part of the county.
Texas recs here.
They're part of our coffee.
What, what, what kind of jobs are those?
They're good jobs.
Can I say pay? Twenty dollars a hour. That's a good job.
For some people, class rec.
I can't, that's, you know, bring in about fifty, fifty jobs, but, 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 you know. Why not work on those things?
We are working on it. We are working on it.
I thought last time we talked, y'all had talked to anybody about that.
Well, I did, I, I said that, and then I, then the next meet, then, Tommy, just go on, on, on. The next meeting, the next meeting, I said I spoke too soon because they called me on Wednesday after the meeting, after the Monday, I said that. And they said that they are super far along and they're expect, expect to receive a letter of intent, you know, anytime?
I've kind of listened a month ago, actually.
You what?
Yes, there was a...
Well, I...
Do you know it's coming?
Because you, you talked to somebody, I didn't.
I'm not going to take a session with you, so, I don't know if that's a better...
Well, I do too. I'm talking to them also, you, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, you see them air Graham?
That is long, you're gonna hear this coming.
I'm talking about, I'm not saying we're going to take, no, no, I'm trying to tell you.
Okay, but I mean...
I knew it a long time ago, you knew it too.
Well, I did.
Because you're investing in it.
I'm investing in it.
Well, you, you just entered, you said it, but...
Investing in what?
Nobody said he knew about it. He said it was a fist.
No!
That is, that was, no, no, that was a question I asked you that you said yesterday.
No, I did not, absolutely not. That is, that is not true.
Then, you got this on record?
I have never said I invested in the land that the data center's in. I've never said that.
And I know people that are.
Yeah, I do too.
But just because I invest in the land, I think you're coming.
How do you not know about it? Do you think they're investing?
Okay, not know about what? Because I do, I've had meetings with the data center people.
You said you misspoke one week and then we said, yeah, I misspoke two soon, instead of that.
Okay, so, I, so Tommy, months ago...
We wouldn't have to ask all these questions.
Months ago, in Commissioners Court, I announced that I had a meeting with the data center developers. And it was twenty billion dollars. I wrote a whole Facebook post on it. I put it on my Facebook page.
That's why I surprised you, you said, yeah.
I went through the whole thing. I had a meeting with them.
He hadn't talked to anyone.
I had a meeting at the chamber.
They asked us not to talk about it.
I had a meeting over at the chamber of Congress with them, and I talked about it a year. I put it on my Facebook.
Excuse me, I'm doing the, if you want to talk, I think you got... He said you asked not to smell, but that, that's why you didn't answer the question.
When I asked what?
I don't know what they told me.
They didn't, they didn't want me to...
In my, to me, and what other Commissioners... Was ever leaving, and we were asked not to talk about what we talked about.
They didn't want to do the financial. They didn't want the, the, I would be, I put it on my Facebook post. I put very detailed financial like numbers, and they just wanted to keep it vague at this point because they had, they don't actually have an end user secure. They're talking to people, but they don't have one secure.
So basically, they were shopping the deal?
They, they are, yeah, they're developers and they are, they are, they are trying to find an end user to purchase what they're developing.
If they don't find a user, they are not gonna do it.
For we say, yes, and then when I said it was, apparently it was dead, because I hadn't heard from them in four or five weeks. And then as soon as I said that on Monday, on Wednesday, they called and they said, hey, we've made a lot of progress and, um, expect a letter of intent in the next couple of weeks. And I haven't gotten the letter of intent, but that, you know, got me excited that we're back on again.
Will they be, will they be tax paid?
Yep.
At very beginning, in the early stage of this, y'all asked that y'all should never get a taxpayer payment. And I said there are certain instances that we will give a tax abatement. When did y'all look for your Mr. Johnson?
Since two thousand sixteen.
Okay, so in nineteen ninety-three, the Heccel Corporation came to the city of Graham and asked for...
Okay, so in nineteen ninety-three, the Hexcel Corporation came to the city of Graham and asked for a tax break. City Graham said, "We're not giving you no tax break." So, they went to Arizona and asked for a tax break out there. I said, "Yeah, we'll give you a tax break if you'll keep three hundred jobs." And they said, "Sure, we'll do it." They packed it, shipped and left.
Well, we understand that because there's, there's a huge amount of jobs involved in that. Totally understand that. The data center, we're totally understand that as well.
That's what this Ford Forsythe that we're talking about. They sent three hundred jobs out of town, but they're not giving a tax break. That's, that's right. You give a tax payment for one job.
There's other, there's other things that roll into that. Not just the job.
But we understand.
We're trying to get the tax break now, right?
I want you to, I, I want you to go figure this, if you want to look at something. The wind farm, if we wouldn't have got it when we did, we would have been in a bad bind, bind here in Young County. Because we actually, whenever that wind farm came in, our lovely appraisal district had made a huge mistake. And without that, we would have been in a real big bind. We had to take money out of our coffers and put into that, into our tax roll to keep from having to raise taxes that year to a point that it would went back. It's a whole county.
What was it?
Uh, not around the top of my head. Did we go fifty or four?
I went on the fourth.
It wasn't that much. It, it wasn't a full payment. They were asking for my.
In the same.
But we should get with the. Yeah, we're seventy with the, in law.
Do they get that same depreciation schedule so far best?
No. But they get.
It's on full money? Yes, okay. That's different.
It has accelerated appreciation.
It's not.
Wind farm has not.
It's a different one basically.
It has accelerated.
So, we also.
Seventy, that's pretty, pretty, pretty big. I would have done that. I would give fifty percent on that. I would give many. Just finish me. Well, that's, that's, fifty percent, that's awful. We definitely, that's, that's a bad, that's a rough.
I'm just telling you, without the wind farm, and it doesn't produce that many jobs either. But without it, we would have raised taxes normally would have.
So, I have one last question. I think we've worn out our welcome. Is part of Mr. Snowden's position or responsibilities to find out kind of, other things that ties us doing it, other projects and the likelihood of them investing in Young County versus the other counties, if you said no or not? Is, is he kind of digging into that to kind of figure out kind of what's going on behind the scenes?
I hope he's going to. You know, we haven't talked about that, but I mean, we talk, when I, the last, and I haven't spoken to the solar farm guys in, we, it's been a long time, but they, they are working, they have, just like this, they have leases in, in other places.
Thirteen that I could find on their website.
They're, they're, you know, they're, they're working other areas. And what they're basically going to do at some point is they're going to, they're going to basically say, okay, this is our number one project, this is our number two project, this is our number three project. And maybe they build them all, maybe they don't, but they're obviously going to start with their number one project and, and kind of work down. And so.
Well, I wonder why they would be offering twenty thousand dollars for each other plus land. Close to this, that there's, over twenty thousand dollars break for land for that shit.
I think you're confusing Jack County and Young County.
No, no, he's not. We know the individual that he knew, that they, they have offered that.
Well, so, so I have seen that happen.
Seventeen hundred acres.
Seventeen hundred?
Yes. So, my, my follow-up question would be if you could, you know, if Mr. Snowden is calling the other counties that they have these projects in and checking with their Commissioner's Court, kind of see where they're at and their thoughts on that. And see if maybe they've got some notes that's been come back or, you know, if those open up. I'm just asking if there's some investigation.
I believe that, like in Jack County, the, the solar farm that they're building right now, I know the, the landowners around have been offered thirty thousand dollars for data center land, fifteen thousand dollars, that, that's an acre, thirty thousand acres for data center, fifteen thousand dollars an acre for substations and then fifteen-ish thousand dollar acre for like. Bill, yeah.
Yeah. No, that's an insole. That's an insole. He said land for data centers.
Yeah. Well, didn't y'all say that the land value was decreasing around this? That was a, that was a.
Well, it would, if, if, yes, we did, but that's land that's next to the project. The land that they want to put the project on is what they're offering this firm for.
We have to book up to our ten o'clock.
Yes. Tommy, Tommy, I think we've worn out our welcome here.
Well, we knew that. We walked in here asking questions. Ask, this league of management, you want to give ship away this?
Well, thank you, thank you for listening. We.
The county, I probably, they, they have sixty percent. They didn't leave, they didn't leave, they didn't leave dollars. They feel they're, they're sure they'll come back.
They offered sixty percent?
They asked for sixty, they got offered twenty. They didn't let them off.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we got to move to our ten o'clock. What is ten o'clock? Open the sale bids for the gazebo purchase. We have no bids. So, there's no action on that. All right, any other public comments? We'll move to the receipt of the hot tax report, eight hundred thirty-six dollars and two cents for June twenty twenty-five from Block House Tiara. Receipt of a hot tax report, a hundred twenty dollars for June twenty twenty-five from Whiskey Creek Cattle Company. Receipt of a hot tax report, twenty-eight dollars for June twenty twenty-five from Danza Cool. Item number four, consider the county clerk minutes from a previous meeting from July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. We have a motion for Commissioner Wiley and a second for Commissioner Creswell. Comments on minutes? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number five, consider the treasurer's finance, financial report and updates on securities pledge. Treasurer Moll.
Go ahead, Ford.
Item number six, consider the audits, the auditor's budget amendments and vouchers payable. Ms. Roberts?
I have vouchers payable.
What you got?
I have eighteen thousand, three hundred thirty-four, twenty-eight, and out of the general is a hundred and two thousand, seven seventy-six, thirty-nine. Uh, there's a thirty-five thousand dollar payment to Grand Hospital for their. Thirty-two five.
So, do we, do we do them quarterly? How can we do that?
No, uh. It says.
How much, how much does it remember?
And this is the.
How much does it say? How much?
Uh, so, it's about.
We're giving thirty thousand.
No, for, for Graham, we do, um, we opted, we do, um.
It was thirty-five.
I've been doing, so here it is, um. We do fifty thousand to Graham. So, how much was that for?
So, this is thirty-two five. It says remainder of the first payment. I guess we didn't give them all that. And then payment two, uh, payment two.
Okay, thirty-two, yeah, thirty-two five, that gets us to fifty thousand total. We've paid seventeen thousand dollars so far. So, that, that, that finishes off. Yeah.
And then there's fifteen thousand. We tried to, we can post each money, let go ahead and let her post.
Okay. All right.
Nothing else special.
We have a motion to approve. Action for Commissioner Wiley and a second for Commissioner Shook. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number seven, discuss and consider and review the plans for building a brand new gazebo on the courthouse line and putting its constructions, or putting its construction out of bids. Mr. Gilmore, welcome.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I appreciate your time this morning. I want to thank you too much of it. So, I appreciate the opportunity to design this new gazebo. We've been working with Mr. Wiley quite a bit on this. We reviewed a couple different design options and iterations. I have the final set of plans on this gazebo design.
What type of trees are these?
Those big trees. They're big. Digital trees.
They look like wild berries.
What I've given you is just a small snippet of the full set of plans. I have brought a copy of the full set of plans for County Clerk as well as the full set of specifications on this project versus past projects. I do. This is the full set of clerks' files.
That's right.
Oh, okay. I'm going to leave these with you whenever I'm done.
Oh, okay.
So, like I said, I just pulled a few sheets out of this full set of plans here. I didn't give you all the structural engineering details. If you want to look for all that before the walk-in tubes, as well as handicap accessibility details. But a cover sheet here, on its first page, you can kind of see the proposed designs we're looking at, the gazebo, very simple.
It's lower than the old gazebo.
It's, uh, it's not stepped up. It's not set above the ground versus the old gazebo yesterday. So, what we've done here.
Ceiling height, just like.
Ceiling height's the same, yes, sir. Ceiling height's the same, but it's not as high above the ground. Um, so, because what we're trying to do is actually a concrete slab on these. Um, the design construction is about one step, so it's about seven inches above the grade level. Um, so you'll step up into that gazebo with one step off of there. We also have a handicap ramp. It's, it's going to be required to be handicap accessible. Uh, we did step it up like the old one. We have a whole bunch of ramps going up into there. So, this is handicap accessible. You've got a ramp that goes into the facility as well as the one step. It's a separate entrance there. It's a concrete slab. Um, everything is built out of structural steel, okay? So, this is not going anywhere anytime soon. Uh, structural steel posts, it is an octagonal design. Overall, it's about seven hundred square feet total in, in square footage. And then structural design, like I said, steel posts, also steel beams up on top. Uh, the second page in that plan that you have there is actually the site plan that you can see. Located in the exact same position where it was previously, so we're not changing that position. It's just gotten bigger, okay? The footprint of the building is actually getting bigger than what the previous one was. And then the next page is the actual floor plan of the facility, uh, the A two oh one sheet. Uh, you also see the reflected ceiling plan there. One difference we are doing here, because it is structural steel, we're going to have steel beams on top of steel posts. We're actually anticipating putting a metal soffit underneath it. Anytime you have that pitch type of roof, that's a great area for bird's nest, watch's nest, mud daubers, all the above. We're actually creating a clean ceiling across there. It's going to be a metal ceiling, so nobody can really stick it in here to it. The dud, you can just take it right off of there. Inside that steel ceiling that we're doing, we're putting all our light fixtures in there. We also have plugs throughout the facility as well, so every other column has a plug down low. The other ones have, the alternating ones have a plug up top, hanging string lights or doing any decorating. I wanted to do throughout that. And then the next page, the last page that you'll have in your, uh, A, you see there's the A four oh one sheet. Again, exterior elevation wise, this is all steel, uh, metal roof that we're putting on top of this, structural steel. Guard railing all around there, just a wrought iron guard railing that will be painted. Colors, we can choose that later. Then the columns themselves of the facility are actually prefabricated, kind of a PVC composite. You've ever heard of a Trex decking? We've done it before. These columns are actually that same product. It's a hybrid of a PVC and a wood composite combined together. These are all molded, prefabricated, molded columns, and then they actually slip over the steel columns that are going to be in place through structural steel. So, again, what we've done, we've tried to choose products on this that are very, very low maintenance. I'm not going to say maintenance free, because nothing's ever maintenance free, but very, very low maintenance. So, you don't have to really tend to other than just going around it and turning the lights on, make sure the power, power bill's paid. Beyond that, this is a facility that we hope that we can get within budget that we're looking at and move forward. We've also added an alternate in this project, so just to add a little design emphasis to it. Speaking to Commissioner Wiley, we put a couple up, up on top of there. Again, it's nothing that really architecturally references back to the courthouse. It's just something that would be an added design element. Uh, to get a little bit more zaz on the exterior design. Again, that's an alternate. We're going to get a separate price for that if we choose not to go that route due to budget constraints. We can absolutely leave that out of there and just have our standard octagonal gazebo.
Do you have an idea of what type of bids we could expect on this?
Right now, uh, because it's structural steel, uh, we're looking at a lot of, again, products that are going to be long-term maintenance, low maintenance, we're looking in order between a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy-five thousand on this type of facility. But I'm hoping we can be a little bit lower than that. So, we'll be realistic on it as well.
So, that's the couple we set you off with.
Makes a difference, doesn't it, Josh?
It adds so much.
It looks very plain.
How much is that price? That's a question.
What, sir?
Couple of one costs.
Uh, so again, what we expect, specified in there is a prefabricated doublup, uh, the one that we specified. The manufacturer is telling us it's about seventeen to eighteen thousand dollar product that we're looking at there. So, uh, that's what the manufacturer tells us. Nobody has actually purchased that product or is anticipating installing it. So, I definitely think it'll be more than that, but if you just pull the one, just the dollar one.
At the top of, you know, like the, 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 the little statue. I think you have a little bronze, give me Wiley on.
As long as it's not me.
We'll watch out. Just kind of looking down over there.
Watch. But if everybody's good with the actual product that we've designed and where we might put it out to bid, give us some actual numbers on this. Uh, we have anticipated to see full specifications again. I didn't print this whole thing for you. You're just telling the contractors exactly what to do, how I printed the bids.
Yes, sir.
That's outside of mine. I didn't want to waste too much money. So, what we're requesting is to put this out to bid for about four to five weeks, four and a half weeks roughly. Uh, receive the bids on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at twelve P M. In the auditor's office, hard copy of bids submitted to the auditor's office. And then we'll bring those back to the following commissioner's court on August twenty-fifth and read those aloud and open this up at ten A M.
That is our game plan right now. Do we have a motion to approve the plans as presented and to put this out for this?
Approve the plans as presented.
Option, yes. Yes, sir. Our bid form has been submitted, Mr. Grant. All right, so we have a motion for Commissioner Wiley to, to approve both, both, both plans. And a second from Commissioner Craig. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Any opposed?
Motion passes five zero. Thanks, Justin.
Thank you guys.
All right. Item number eight, discuss and consider the sale of retired sheriff office vehicles through state deals. Sheriff Babcock?
Hey.
How are you? What's your plan here?
My name is Joe.
Little reinforcement there, Sheriff.
She doesn't want, she can't find any records of.
Yeah, that, that would be important.
This is one of them.
What we hope. We've got your logo on it.
Yeah, that's.
And this, this one is one that.
What have you seen?
Yeah, we've.
Ah, okay.
They didn't blow it up.
If I find all the information.
Now, let me check. We loaded up since that.
Can Scott, can Scott, can Scott? Can Scott, can Scott, can Scott?
Oh, or if you ship a harbor to another.
And I don't for a fact one hundred percent that, that was Jim Bays, we, we were over here this whole time.
Okay.
Um, so on this one.
We also have a bus, we found this short bus, we need to do something with it.
He's gone.
Is that the one out there?
We just transferred it.
Maybe something that he wants to make, come on, it won't squatter.
Can you give a file for, for all the titles?
On that one? Why should I have the title? We should have it titled in our name, so we're gonna get Christie to run the bid number.
You have a below third one, right?
Oh, yeah. Fifteen thousand.
Eight hundred?
The money from the sale goes into the general fund. So that's what I'm saying, it's, it's really counting money, we just.
Moving it around.
Move it over to you.
Does anyone have an objection to making a motion that Scott take that, that blue vehicle? Let's proceed.
You're paying fifteen thousand?
Hundred. But what will, we'll, we'll come up with a fair transfer back.
So we'll put this and possibly that Dodge.
Alan, you might need that.
That would be a precinct vehicle.
Run?
Yeah.
But that other one that he's comped, I don't have a picture of that one, but it's also a four-door Dodge Ram.
Oh, yeah. Think I might want one instead.
No. I think it's over to this one, I don't know, I can't, 'cause I didn't have any information as far as year or anything, I don't have a title, so.
I'm, I'm working.
What's that? This, I think it's this. Yeah, I have the title on it. We moved it to Young County.
But the bus, it's cool way ahead.
I don't know. I wouldn't think so.
Well, I didn't have any pictures of the bus.
So what, besides the blue pickup, what we're trying to figure out is if we're gonna put them all on Gov. Deals.
I'll give you that.
And get rid of the days over.
Can you put the ones that received on there also?
Not yet, I don't have titles on them.
Thought you just had to give the paperwork, but I think what I'm getting.
We need to get, we need to give the paperwork, get the titles, get them in Young County's name.
Yeah, right now, right now, what I'm more worried about is getting rid of county.
Let's take these one at a time, so do we have a motion to allow Scott to have the, to have an option to purchase for his precinct, the blue pickup truck? Depending on what, what. Twenty ten Chevy, uh, determined, determined to be a fair market value for that truck. So we have a motion from Commissioner Craig and a second from Commissioner Cresswell, all in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero. Second motion, do we have a motion to put the rest of these retired sheriff office vehicles on the Gov. Deals? Motion for Commissioner Wiley and second for Commissioner Craig, all in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero.
We want to run them for two weeks.
Sure.
Yeah, that's great. It's good to get rid of those, let me get them off the, stop hand, insurance on them. All right, awesome, thanks, thanks, Sheriff. Item number nine, discuss and consider resolution number one twenty-six, fiscal year twenty twenty-six regarding Young County authorizing and approving the appointment and reappointment of individuals to the Board of Directors of the Nortex Housing Finance Corporation. I'm gonna spare everyone from me reading this entire thing, but, uh, what this resolution is, is that we are supporting Paul Wiley, who is currently a Board of Director, but his term expires in August, appointing him to a new term, to another term to serve on the Nortex Board. Do we have a motion to approve that? Do we have a motion for Commissioner Wiley and a second for Commissioner Cresswell? Gotta be fast, Commissioner Cresswell. All in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero. Item number ten, discuss and consider naming Missy Henby to the Young County Child Welfare Board. She has, um, gone through all of her background checks, uh, she has passed, she's been vetted by the leadership of the Young County Child Welfare Board. And they have, um, and she. And she, uh, she's been highly recommended to that board. Hey, Timmy, can you double check my email? And of the name that I put on the child welfare board, I don't think this name's right, Missy Henby. Well, we approved, we approved Missy Henby a long time ago.
That's, that's the original, which was.
Right. Right, but I, I gave, I gave you the name, and the email has the name, it's not Missy Henby, Missy Henby we've already approved. It's. Can you find the email I sent you about this?
George's guy.
It's God. We need the name, no, we, 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 we're just gonna.
I heard nothing but good about you, sir.
You didn't go to jail then, then?
Not yet.
I was talking to a guy in the store, he was bragging on you, picked out forever. He don't get around very good, he don't like.
No gym.
I, I tell him, well, he kinda like his name, talk about it when I went out. But he don't get around very good, I'll just put it to you that way. You probably know who it is, Nick. But he was bragging on you, I'd have him getting stuff from the grocery store, he was just bragging on you.
Thanks for sharing.
Makes me know that you know what we want you to do.
But I thought we did her already. We had both names when I did. Okay, that's why that name sounds familiar, okay, it is Missy Henby, all right. Do we have a motion to approve Missy Henby to the Young County Child Welfare Board? Motion for Commissioner Cresswell, do we have a second? Second from Wiley, all in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero, sorry about that, I, uh, that number didn't look right when I. All right, item number twelve, discuss and consider a contract between Young County Precinct Three and the city of Alny regarding material storage yard. Commissioner Craig?
Y'all have a copy of the proposed lease agreement. Uh, this is to replace the existing yard that I have. Tower Fab is wanting to purchase the land to expansion, purchase the land from the city, so the city have asked us to move. This is our new lease agreement for land by the Alny Convenience Station. Just over there.
It's over at the tower property, over here?
That's where we are now.
Where's the new property gonna be?
It is on, uh, a north, a north road, it's basically the same distance from the precinct office, from the, what we got. Actually may be a little easier in and out, because we're not pulling on state highway. But that, that is also one of the reasons for the contract, if you like, it is, we are gonna have to spend some money to put a recess gate where the truck can pull off the paved road without blocking traffic. Very fun change, uh, section two, two point zero one, that should read one hundred dollars annually, not per month. The next, eventually we do a payable the first day each month, that's gonna have to be changed from, uh, us and the city deciding when we actually want the contract to start. And this has gone before the city council, they have a probable contract with those two changes. It has not been signed, and that's why we do not have a signed copy like this.
I'd like to also point out, it's a five-year, it's a five-year lease with, with Commissioner Craig having a sole option for a two additional five-year term. So, and his option would be fifteen years.
Fifteen years, and we're reducing it from five hundred a year to one hundred a year.
Well, it's rated. Do we have a motion to approve this contract upon, conditional, conditionally upon receiving a signed contract from the city of Alny?
With the two changes.
With the, with the two changes as presented. And you're making this motion, correct?
I am making that.
Commissioner Craig is making the motion that we accept this new yard lease agreement. Second from Commissioner Wiley, all in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero, and once we get that from the city, I'll execute it and then we'll run it through Commissioner's.
So you need a place of the entire forty acres?
No.
I didn't like it.
Six hundred foot.
Six hundred foot by six hundred foot out of the south.
Out of the southwest corner.
Opposite end of the entrance, that's back there. Okay, let's move to item number thirteen, discuss and consider requesting sealed bids for the purchase of a twenty twenty-five Dodge five thousand, fifty-five hundred duly pickup, presented by Jimmy Wiley.
Uh, I've got a Ford, it's, it's a lot of miles on it, it's getting close to the point where you start losing value on the part bid. And I need to try to get a, get it replaced. I've got the specifications that I'll be with here on, and we'll put on together for one to two weeks. In paper, and we'll, we'll back that in the two weeks, the D M, two Mondays from now.
Yes, it's on this week, is it on this fourth?
Yes, it will.
Ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock, we'll open the bids, we'll take them till Friday at, uh, four o'clock.
Sounds good.
All right, is that a motion? All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, uh, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Cresswell, all in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider an eighty-acre subdivision on Humphrey Road, Mr. Ray Reeves. Thank you for your patience. Yes.
I did, yeah. While we developed the Brooks Estates out there, the other hundred acres, it went, it went well until we're looking at it a mess here.
Have you sold all your lots?
We got one left.
Oh, good.
Congratulations. I could get your blessing on moving forward with this. Sets right for one to.
That's brother's place?
Yes, sir. He's gonna retire, I guess, moving forward. But I don't know, I think this is the Brooks Estates here, this is the new one.
So this is coming up, Humph, Humph, Humphrey Road, Humphrey Road, and then you got a loop? And then you have a cul-de-sac, how many lots?
Uh, there's sixteen lots. He's keep, my brother's keeping this, uh, I think it's, it's, that's six, that's, that contract, he's gonna keep that.
So do we have enough water out here for all these two columns?
We, we do, if we hit, if we hit some wells in here, the lowest one was forty-five gallons per minute up to eighty-five gallons.
And are you gonna, are you gonna drill water wells to then supply to all these rooms?
Each, each, the water has its own, own water. Or some of, some of these buyers in here came in here and they bought two lots, they might do the same here, so, I don't know. How many lots come first, five, twenty-five?
How long?
You bet you. Be a gated addition, just like here, with, with a thirty K on it. We'll do the sign of like one pump here, so it's basically the same deal, just.
I think it's like sort of. Here's your round, you pass out and it's like. Just go here, you got eleven right there. You got all the jobs about that. You got a cul-de-sac, you got a cul-de-sac here. It just has no way in, no way out. Fire gets on here on this side, or fire gets on this one. That's what I'm concerned. So our rig requires, you can, you can require you to put water tanks on there so that you can have fresh water there to be, have fire suppression in case of fire. You and I both know if something was happening, especially with houses that's going to get, you know, we ain't going either out the south or the north, that's just what you're like to do.
Well, we're not, we're, I mean, the, uh, the letting, the fire department's only like four and a half miles away from them, and we'll, they're have, they'll have a hundred percent access to it. And I'm sure the landlord can get them, give them permission to come through here, cut off any, any, any fire, I think, if, if something happens.
But then a ventilation, then it would be nice if you had a way to get from this one to that one, and that one to this one, just to give them an extra outlet.
Or could we find a place, the, some sort of storage tank where we can keep some water there, just our case?
It would be up to them. Kind of like the wildcat, I talked to them, they were talking about the subdivision up on that.
Well, our, our rules, we've got.
Required. That we, yeah, we have the option to require a limited fire suppression system, there's a big pond in here, we're walking ahead several, probably a couple more ponds in the subdivision we, we haven't developed yet.
But we, we will have water, water on hand, and then this will, will pop some fire.
I wonder if we could, I'm, I'm just, sure, I'm just thinking, just thinking, we could, if we could maybe take a piece right here and put a, water, a three to five thousand gallon tank there, just to keep water there. That you could, had they hooked up to a water well where you could just, you know, keep it full, and then that way if something happens and the fire department comes in, they have a place to get some more water to try to save these homes. Because, I mean, you know, you're talking, you know, here you got your ten acre, if you got home here, you're doing the effort for it. This is, this is gonna, this is like, uh, you know, like in the middle of the city almost.
Really, really, it's right there, you're way in the middle of something. That way the guys that come in, get to it all night.
Like, and for both subdivisions.
Well, we could, we could certainly look at that, maybe block and something, and then.
Because that's gonna be the main thing, you just cause fire department's that close, move out here.
Right.
Where are your fire lines?
Well, we got, we, we got the, on court, he got a, just like this one, right all the way down.
They started through up, right?
What's a fire line? Power line, okay.
Okay, they got the power line, mostly fire stuff from there, the power line. That means that you got more of an opportunity for it to start a fire up there in the front. At one of the, if you get this burning where you can't get out of it, I still think. To make that safe.
I don't know, the margins, these are already sold, but I don't know that they can like that very far.
No true time to get over the fire.
Yeah, that's, that's, but if you get this thing.
They, they know what they, they can't even.
I mean, that's one thing we talked about, even with the wildcat, there's on top of that hill, they had to figure out a different way to get off of it. If you get somebody trapped up there, you can't get them out, you can't get to them. You can only do some luck. If I ain't got a second way out, it can get bad. Or you'd only do the one subdivision here, you had no other option, rather than you put a second one inside.
If I'd stopped being twenty twenty, then I said this would be.
Yeah, I could, yeah. Right. Even if you gated it, you don't. Or emergency. But that's, I don't know.
I, I think, I'm, I'm.
So, yourself, this Brooks, I thought y'all were keeping that one.
No, 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 we're actually building us a house right here, we don't know if we're gonna sell it or keep it here. My wife made her decision.
But you would still have that option, because you're gonna have to go to this couple of things from here.
But you, you still have this one right here.
You can gate it and make it to where you had an emergency exit across your property at that point. And if you decided to sell it, then it would just be for, do this after emergency exit for each direction.
Did you work that out? An emergency, not useful type.
No, 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 I'm only.
I read it.
We can, we can look at that.
Sure.
I mean, you would have to put it on the map as part of it, but emergency.
Move this to that.
Yes, and drive along that lot line.
Yeah, we can, we can do that.
We got the murder with the guy right here.
They would basically just be right.
The thing right away is not through emergency.
Right, not, not a paved road, but a, but a emergency right away.
But also, but also state of Texas requires now of us being able, if you go in here and do this right here, that's a twenty twenty-four.
As Senate Bill twent- two four four, uh, took effect, took effect on January first, twenty twenty-four.
That'd be a good one or still would be hard to do.
And the modified government's code states a plat application for a subdivision of attractive land for which the water supply source is groundwater must have attached, mustn't have attached a statement by a licensed engineer or a licensed geoscientist in the state of Texas that certifies adequate groundwater is available for the subdivision. Legislation references the already established chapter two, three O in the Texas administration code, which is titled ground, well, groundwater availability certification by plat. These documents are the framework for completing a groundwater, groundwater study and outline the necessary requirements for completion.
That's what I think. Yeah, we got, we got great water out there. Yeah. We'll, we'll look at doing this and then we'll look at building something like this.
Yeah, we could, if we could.
How big the ten?
I would put two, three hundred.
Three thousand.
They're, they're barrel.
Oh, three hundred barrel.
Yeah.
Which is twelve, the big one. Yeah.
Green, you build a tan, but the green was.
Do, do, the tan is better because the UV doesn't work on it.
Is there any, is there any? Okay, so, some sort of water tank, some sort of connection here and a water station. That's where I was. We, we, yeah, ripped off and do the. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll work on that. Outside of that, this looks awesome.
Other, somebody listed, I saw like, and we can't make another road going up this way because of this road.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I know it.
All right. And then on the, I can't remember, on the name of the road, Buck Canyon, is that something? I can't remember, y'all approved that road last time we were meeting?
Yeah, Harley's. Harley, you'll have to go with which one of those.
Okay, the nine one one, get her blessing on it?
You have, what you do, you need to get Harley, it's waiting for you, or you had call him, it's waiting up there.
Yeah, we, my wife did all that, she, she, she can say it, I just couldn't remember if y'all approved the road or not, or she took her.
It'll be one name.
One name. This whole thing would be one name? We would like to get it one name and make it easy. I don't know why.
They'll probably see that, because they might make a change and stuff, on the calls, on the calls.
All right.
But this here is.
Are you gonna?
Just, just grab a lot.
And is there a gate here?
There is a gate, keep it.
That actually, that one right there, that drive in?
Oh, it's a, we're building a house right.
All these got to go.
Nice view back there to the bottom ground.
Yeah, looks good. All right. All right. Thank you, appreciate it. We'll be back in seven.
Can you look at Woodwater and Old Club?
Yeah, everything, every, you know, the awful running, we have everything. Okay, so Harley heard this and said, nor they, Nor Tech won't accept a road name unless we first approve it.
Okay.
So, you'll come up with a road name and present it to us. Harley can then double check and make sure there's not one in the county and we can approve it.
Okay, we've got Buck Canyon Road.
Can you research Buck Canyon Road?
Buck Canyon.
Oh, Buck, Buck, Buck Canyon, like a deer, Buck Canyon Road. I, I would agree, so, uh.
But we have a canyon road.
So, that road will be fine, why don't you, when you come back and with everything, we can go ahead and put that on there and we'll approve that.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Harley.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. That was, I mean, live right there. We're back, it's proof that we're actually online. Um, discuss and consider burn restrictions. No action?
Probably give it two more weeks. We're, we're hitting there, surrounding counties are starting to have fires pop off, but we've been pretty good.
But at that time, we had ten Dodge around already, so not this weekend, but last week, yeah.
Can I ask, I'm sure everybody would like to take a rest and break. But I would, I would ask, can we do Adam, because Adam's taking. Can we do Adams?
They can take a call up, but.
Back there, brother, put the rest up.
Sure.
Adam, come on up, my friend. So.
Two weeks on the road.
How you doing?
Great.
The weekend? Yeah. Morning to the morning. That's the, Adam, gotcha? Do you wanna add one? A little long, yes, Kyle, do you put up? That was my watch's one. Oh, yeah. Okay, so, page four oh five, and that's the page number four. So, before we get started, if you can flip behind the first page, and it's kind of hard to necessarily, these pages go together, so you almost have to split it apart. But what I asked, what I asked Adam to do for me is to, to log his time. So, he, he works full-time at the U S Postal Service, and he works Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday for the postal service. And then he works for us on Wednesdays. And so, he logs his time each week, and the hours are stacked. So, the first week he worked thirty-eight hours for the county, the next week he worked thirty-one hours for the county, thirty-one hours for the county, twenty-seven hours for the county, thirty-two hours for the county, thirty-four hours for the county.
Round that.
Twenty-eight hours. You can see that he, he is, he is, yes, and so, what he's, that's, you know, he's working eight, eight hours here, then he's going to Alny and he's doing office hours in Alny. Then he's going, doing home visits, he's going and helping local businesses, trying to, or he's going to local businesses, trying to get services for veterans. Goes to the funeral home to help when they, uh, when a veteran needs, uh, you know, get military.
Yeah, records recovery.
Yes.
Sure they get all of their laxity.
Absolutely. So, issue number, or the, the, the point Adam and I, or at least I wanna point out is Adam is going above and beyond. Now, last year, we did increase Adam's pay, so we're, we are paying him now, not just for one day, we're, we're paying him for ten and a half days. So, uh, we did rectify or, or, we, 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 we're not fully compensating Adam for his time, but we, we took a step in the right direction last time to do that. If you go to the front page, one thing I would like to propose, and Adam, if we offered this, Adam could not accept this right now, if he, he, he just couldn't accept it. But I would like to throw out the idea of making Adam full-time. Granted, knowing that he could not accept that position right now, he is actually going, you're going through the process of getting your disability.
A federal disability, it's a postal service program.
Yes.
Everything up that bomb, my heart and my brain.
So, he, he is looking to retire from the post office with a, with a disability discharge. And if that was the case, he could then come work for us full-time. Now, there would be a limitation on what we could pay him, because if we paid him too much, he couldn't get his disability benefits, which he wouldn't want to lose. So, the maximum salary he could accept from us would be thirty-nine thousand dollars for a full-time job. I would like to propose, and, and Adam, Adam said it could be three months and it could be fifteen months before he gets notice of whether or not his request to go to, to receive this disability is approved or not. And there's a chance it's not approved, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's up in the air. But if we were to budget him at a full-time salary of thirty-nine thousand dollars, if that happened.
We would be prepared.
Yeah, and then Adam, then Adam could come, you know, gosh, he could, he, there's no telling what he could do if he had five days to work for us, because he's, what he's doing on one day, which is what we really kind of allocated to him originally, is, is far surpassed anything that he could have expected.
I was about to tell the February, uh, that story yesterday, guy just bragging on him to beat sixty. He threw all the help he's done.
I didn't print all these out for y'all, but if you are interested in reading it, these are some letters of thanks that we received from what Adam's done for me, and it's, I mean, he pushed, I think. No, it's a stack of them, and, um, it, it is, and I mentioned this last year, I, I get stopped all the time at United from, or Walmart from people who just wanna thank me for what Adam has done for them and getting them their benefits and giving them, you know, assistance that they haven't been able to get on their own.
With budgeting it, I don't see a problem with that, and we would just hold that money back till he did become eligible.
We would just, we would have it budgeted, and then if Adam said, hey, I found out I got my disability, we would all come together and say, okay, we're gonna start this on May first, or, you know, just pick up, you know, pick a time that we can start this. But if we don't budget, we couldn't take advantage of that.
Adam, would there be issues in longer?
Yeah, my wife made it to my cell phone. Yeah, we want, he would, he would.
Wouldn't turn in a tag? Yeah.
So, the budget, the budget we're proposing for him would be an appointed salary of thirty-nine thousand dollars, a cellphone allowance of seven hundred and twenty dollars, an office supply budget of six hundred dollars, business travel expense, he goes back and forth to, um, Alny. And so, that's, that's really what that's, that's for, but that's eight hundred dollars.
If we wound up with him full-time, would that be whole?
It could be.
It would be hard to engage.
I would imagine it would be.
So, right now, he's not spending that full eight hundred, but he's on track right now to maybe spend five hundred to six hundred of that eight hundred right now. He's asking for education of eighteen hundred, he spends, we, what do we estimate, it's about seventy-five, seven hundred and fifty dollars per, per session you go to?
Right.
And that's hotel and, and mileage and that. Misalanius, five hundred dollars, and then office equipment and furniture, fifteen hundred dollars. That is what he's not gonna get spent, but what we budgeted for him to set up his new office last year. He's, he's spent a good chunk of it, but he's got, he's, he's got fifteen hundred left, he wanted to get that carried over. If you haven't gone over to look, he's really, it's really a neat setup over there. What else I missed?
Happy to, disabled, let's do it again.
Uh, last year's fiscal year twenty-three, G E X, uh, reported one thousand one hundred and at least thirty-two. And that's not marked from disabled to not, that's registered veterans in the county. So, we wanna point out registered, because there's a lot of veterans who are still not in contact with the V A for benefits, so that number is potentially higher.
That's just wish.
Correct. I said, I said I'll have fiscal year twenty-four's report information, V A hasn't released that yet, so I'm not sure if we've gone up, increased from fiscal year twenty-four. I would hope.
One thing Adam's talked about, if he had more time with this, is to start looking for, exploring for grants. And a lot of those grants are, are reimbursement style grants where the county would have to front the money, and we would pay the money out and then we would get reimbursed by whoever issued the grant later. But, um, I think, you know, if he had more time, I think that would be a, a nice, a nice benefit we could add to Young County is trying to find some grants for, to help some of our veterans in the county. He's also been asked to, uh, coach up some of the veteran officers in the counties around us. And so, we've talked about, uh, hosting, uh, luncheons or something here in Young County to where they can go and add, kind of get seminars to what he's doing and maybe what they can do a little bit better. They're very quick, we're. Yeah, that's exactly what we're talking about, young man.
As a full-time point too, that we, we have to operate the insurance and the life insurance, and the, you know, that.
Um, I do my kids a lot.
And that, yeah, that, you know, you can totally, you can, you do, but the life insurance, it's like eleven dollars a month for our life insurance that we provide for full-time employees.
Yeah. We'd have to talk to the town, would that be, that'd be great.
I just have to add an insurance line.
What do y'all think? Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, it looks good.
All right, we'll try to make that work in our budget.
I encourage you guys, like, uh, you guys were saying, read some of these letters there. They're, they make me feel great, I'm managing.
When you get somebody that's got tears in their eyes, telling someone to appreciate them, in, in a grocery store, it, it bothers, it's something else.
So, one thing I don't, the only thing I don't like about Adam moving out of the mouse hole that he was in below, and into his nice office, is I used to, you know, get to see the people lined up, talk to them, and I, I couldn't go to the restroom without getting kind of pulled to the side and, and people bragging on. So, one thing I've, the only thing I don't like about Adam moving out of the mouse hole that he was in below, and into his nice office, is I used to, you know, get to see the people lined up to talk to him, and I, I couldn't go to the restroom without getting kind of pulled to the side and, and people bragging on, on the work that he's doing. Because you are doing a wonderful job for Young County. We're proud of you. All right, we'll, uh, try to make this work, and I'll let you get on again. All right, sir, appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, do you wanna take a, like a five-minute, minute-long break, and then we'll continue with the paperwork job?
Okay.